Ms. John here, Colonel Curtis.
Do you have any special recognitions at this time?
May I receive them?
And no architects report?
No.
Departmental report.
Then for departmental report, we have the update of Phase Two Office and Education Qualitability Accountability School Performance Review, Chapter Four. Since Chapter Four is so long, we split it into two presentations and Ms. Brenstetter and Teresa will be doing the first presentation.
The evening, afternoon, evening, and out there. Okay. First of all, let me say I wanted to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to kind of give our perspective of it, so I do appreciate this time this evening. Please feel free to stop me at any time if I get to moving too fast or if you ask any questions, just jump right in there and slow me down if you need to. Okay, I'm going to start with number one, and the recommendation was to develop desk procedure manuals for each of the finance, human resources, and payroll departments, then cross-train until each, until at least two staff members in each of the departments are, can accurately and independently perform each of the major tasks. Now, tonight, I'm only going to be speaking of the finance and the business office. The other girls will come and delay the time and speak on their departments, but we're only talking about business and finance office. And we accepted that recommendation just as it was. I will tell you that what we did was we printed out each of the Olio procedure manuals. The company has them printed out. We did that at the beginning when we bought the new software. We hadn't done that in a few years, so we did go back and reprint them out. They're very nice, in color. We also put the PDF files on each of the girls' computers so that they have search ability to find the actual instructions on how to perform each of the tasks. Very nice. We also worked on the typing up of procedures on other items that are kind of like journal entries into the system that have to be uploaded into the accounting system. Your basement supplies, transportation charges, they were written out, they just weren't typed. So, we took the time to go ahead and type those up. And I also then listed each of the three departments in the finance office, the finance, the purchasing, and the accounts payable, and each of the major tasks in those departments. And you can see that at least two, in most cases, three people can accurately do all of the major tasks in those areas. Okay? All right. Number two, it asks to, asks us to conduct an anonymous user satisfaction survey with the principals, the financial secretary of the departments on some ways that we could probably change, that may need changes in the finance office that may need to be improved, to help improve our relationship with the sites. We were pretty much undecided on that one. The report didn't offer any data, nor did it list any school districts in the state of Oklahoma. They actually listed someone in Missouri that had used an anonymous survey with any kind of success. It left us with more questions than possible solutions. How do you validate? How do you monitor? How do you? It just left us with too many questions. So, we are always open to improvement, so we took a different approach. We actually took the time to go to visit each and every one of the schools last year. And we asked ourselves, what were the stress points of our clients, the secretaries, the principals, that sort of thing? And how could we modify and change to make things easier for them without compromising our compliance with any board policy, procedure, state law, or federal regulation? When you deal with money, you know how tricky it can be. So, what we did was, the first thing we did was we changed our annual secretaries meeting, the format of that, and then I'll go into that a little bit more when it talks about training. We visited each of the sites to include the principals, the secretaries, the sponsors, the coaches, the teachers, anyone that handled money. We personally went out and had visits with them. We evaluated the need to send out corrections all the time from the bank, account code corrections and that sort of thing, unless the deposit was way off base, then we felt like we still needed to send those kinds of corrections. We were just sending them, some of them were just repetitious and then probably just became anonymous, so we changed that up a little bit. Now, I will tell you that now that we've done that for about a year, after Teresa had gone back out this week, actually, she made another visit out to each of the schools, handing out the cash on hand to the secretaries. She's been getting mixed reviews on that one. So, some of them still want them, some of them don't. So, you fix one thing, you kind of offset some of the, on the other side, some of the other girls still want them. So, we'll try to figure out what's the best solution on that. We also changed who we informed when the deposit. We found out that we were basically sending our responses to the secretaries, and we felt like that we were leaving them holding all of the responsibility, when honestly, it's not just their responsibility when they are not in compliance with the state law. State law says their deposits must, if it's over a hundred dollars, must be deposited the following day. Well, we were, we are also, not only are we the finance office, the business office, purchasing, we're also the auditing department for the district. We must audit all things. So, when we were telling them that, hey, your deposit didn't get there on time, what we do is we select, randomly select deposits and review them, just like the auditor would review, because that is one of the major issues that is, we are always written up in the audit every year. Not a finding, but at least in the management letter. So, we, we actually had one individual that used to do that, and a staff member that used to do that on a regular basis, and she then resigned, retired, so that, those duties just kind of fell back on us to do that. So, we've been doing it, but again, we were just isolating the secretaries, so we felt like they were kind of caught in the middle. So, what we did was we made sure that we were ensuring that the principals knew, the sponsors knew, as well as the secretaries, so that we all kind of shared the responsibility on making sure that everybody understood what the state law is. All right. Number three. Analyze the methodology for charging for the use of school buses and the drivers to ensure all costs are included, revise billing rates as needed, and review the process for charging schools to improve the timeliness of them. We accepted that one with some modifications. We review this process every year and make any changes when necessary. That's what we've always done. Last year, we changed how we handle the athletic and the sanction trips, your boost, I mean, your ban, your cheer, those sorts of things, in order to gather some data by site to better determine whether or not we wanted to continue to handle those types of trips at the district level, or did we want to actually put that and move that into their billing application. So, now that we've actually changed it up a little bit, we'll be able to see how much fans spent, how much cheers spent, and how much the athletic department spent. Before, we were all lumping it all into one account code, and it was really hard for us to find out or gather any information, so we changed that up a little bit. We also adjusted the process to handle the tolls. We added the pipe pass to the buses, so that the sponsors wouldn't have to carry cash to pay for the tolls. The total charges for a trip cannot be calculated until the driver is paid, and that is once a month, and that is what it is, and I don't think we can change that, we only run payroll once a month, so it is what it is. We also adjusted the gas price. Every time we purchase gas, we changed the system. And their recommendation was that we set a standard rate for the trips. Had we done that at the beginning of the year, we would have pretty much overcharged everybody for the trips. The gas price, when we started last year, the gas prices were at 303, and when we ended, they were at a dollar seventy-seven. So, we take the time to change the gas price every time we take, we get gas. So, we are trying to charge them. You know, the schools do a lot of fundraising and that sort of thing, so we definitely don't want to overcharge them for anything, but we do just need to charge them with the actual expenses. We can't do that unless we wait until the driver is paid and the gas is put into the system.
Diane, do we not have like a standard mileage rate that kind of includes like maintenance or, you know, things like that, like?
Yes, we do add in that gas price or in the formula when the whole system generates the cost of the trip, we do add just a slight, just a little bit for the upkeep of the buses and oil and that sort of thing. We do add just a little bit, not much, just a little bit.
Have we stopped paying drivers that are teachers, that are coaches, and they just drive for the event because they don't have a driver? We used to pay them, are we not paying them any longer?
Coaches have never been paid. That is part of their extra duty record, so that was it.
Well, I think coaches were paid a stipend to drive the bus, and then that went away.
I'd have to go back to see how far back that has been, because they are paid an extra duty record as a coach, and to the best of my knowledge, they weren't paid anything in addition to that.
Well, I was told otherwise, so, okay, I just wanted to know.
That must be really far back. As long as I can remember, they weren't paid in addition.
I could be incorrect. I wasn't prepared for this, I was just handling this, so I couldn't do any of my stuff, so. Okay, go ahead. Ms. Haskins, can you help us?
I don't. We do not pay them for the sport that they're being paid the extra duty. If they are used as a driver for a sport, other than the sport that they are, they're receiving an extra duty pay, then they would be an A, they'd be dry out, yes.
Okay, so both can be true.
They were paid, about ten years ago, they were paid all projects of buses, coaches and bus drivers were paid extra duty for the bus, but that was several years ago.
Okay.
That's a decade.
Quite, quite a few years back.
A decade can be a lot, a lot faster and a lot sooner than you think. When you're old, ten years doesn't seem that long ago. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I will, I will inquire and just let you know.
That's fine.
Just more for my curiosity and your curiosity. Okay, number four, provide current monthly financial reports to the school board to include comparative revenue and expenditure data by function and other categories. We accepted that one just as is. We made those adjustments about a year ago, shortly after we got the review, the very first time we made those changes in our monthly treasury reports. And also, we provide revenue and budget updates during the year, anytime there are any changes on the state revenue. Try to keep you informed on that. Number five, says to improve information and training provided to the schools and department staff, including materials pertaining to administrative processes such as finance and budgeting. Last year, we did, like I said mentioned, we did the annual secretary's training differently. Wasn't just an open meeting, we actually had many sessions. We broke everybody, all the girls in the department, including the basement supplies, transportation, fixed asset, purchasing, accounts payable, activity funds. We had many sessions, and they all got to move to the different classes. And we actually had handouts to show them hands-on how to fill out forms. Breaking them into smaller groups, we also felt like we were getting a little bit better response from them, more to ask questions they weren't quite as afraid to ask as in a larger group when there's four people in a room versus six or seven. So, we got great reviews from that, so we plan to do that again. Our secretary's meeting has been postponed just slightly, but will be on September 2nd. We normally do it in July, but the infinite campus kind of took priority, so we kind of shifted ours back a little bit. But we will do the same thing. We've got great reviews on that.
Diane, this is kind of, I don't know if this would wrap into your area or not. There are secretaries that are responsible for filling out that, making sure that free and reduced card is filled out properly every year. There are secretaries at the schools that gather that information. I think it's, it's that gray card that asks them?
You mean the impact date card?
Yes, thank you, the impact date card. Are they having any training for that? Because I had heard a few secretaries say that they didn't?
Hadn't gotten anything.
Yeah, didn't know what they needed to have filled out in order to get the funds that were supposed to go to their school.
Right. That information actually is going to come more in line with enrollment center.
Okay.
We can, I will make note of that and see what we can do to try to help them, especially on those new ones. We do that in October.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We also offered training on the accounting software and sales, or manager, form manager is how they see their reports. We put that into place a few years ago, and I can tell you that it's been got sent. They can actually see up-to-date moment by moment everything that's in every one of their accounts, so that it's been a real, real plus to us. We also actually went out to all seven secondary schools and met, like I said, with all the coaches, the sponsors, anyone in the building that actually handled money. I think the secretaries, again, I felt, we felt like they were the ones that were kind of stuck between everybody, they were, who we were informing. The secretaries were much appreciated that they came out to share with the state law to the coaches and the sponsors and the teachers, because they were the ones that were having to pass on that, and they felt like, you know, they were kind of caught in the middle. So, we took the time to do that, and we, we plan to do that again this year, because obviously, we have new, new teachers, new sponsors, new, that's a good problem. And money, like I said, is a tricky situation. Okay, number six, identify all crucial functions and the document procedure manual and all that. We felt like that was a duplicate of number one. Develop, number seven, develop an informative budget document, place it on the district's website to provide the public with information pertaining to the district's financial operations. We accepted that one just as is. The budgets, the audits, the activity fund manuals, the sanctioning information, the use of the facilities information, the sales tax and bond reports have all been added to the website now. I will tell you that that was one thing that probably never really crossed my mind. I'm not a big technology type of person, but, you know, once I got started with it, I was quite pleased how it turned out, pretty, pretty impressed with it. Other items that are to follow will be the purchasing manual and the fixed asset policy and procedures, but you can find all the sanctioning information, the dates and that sort of thing on the website. Really pleased with that. Number eight, establish a budget development process that provides an input from the public as well as school and department staff. We've accepted that one with modifications. Lawton Public Schools does not elect to use the new budget act that is in this review. We've elected to continue with the standard estimate needs method. We went to a meeting in April, we go to our training, we go twice a year, and I went to a budget meeting there, and they had, they did inform us that most everybody that tried the new budget pack, what it means is they're actually setting a budget in May. That's pretty hard to do when you don't get your state aid until July. So, they're setting a budget really on a wing and a prayer, and we elected not, we've never elected to do that. But I will tell you, at that budget meeting, he said that almost ninety percent of the people that changed have already changed back to the estimate needs. It's just not working. Okay. Budget meetings are held with all the administrators, department heads, offering them the opportunity to give input, as well as, the district now has the bond oversight committee made up of community leaders assisting us with the spending and oversight of the bond and the sales, sales tax funds. Number nine, place special emphasis on what percentage of district funds are budgeted for instruction during the budget development process and establish a target percentage for future years. We are a little bit undecided on that one, not that we're against it, we, we think it's a good thing. Let me read my comment there. Instruction of rarebound citizens is the most important aspect of the district's budget. However, with the limited resources over the past decade, the district has had very little in the area of additional funds to maintain a target of just one area instruction. It is, yes, it is the most important, but it's very hard for us to do that. Over the past several years, the state has also recognized the budget decline, allowing the district's flexibility in regard to textbook funds. They will, they gave us textbook funds, but told them, told us that it was at the discretion of the district as to how to spend it. This year, they actually removed the textbook fund. We no longer will be getting textbook funds this year. Okay? But on a positive note, the support of the community with the passing of the bond and the sales tax funds, the district has been able to allocate about $2 million for instructional needs directly to the sites. We are very appreciative of that. Okay, number 10, develop a board policy for the general fund balance that provides guidance and oversight and produce routine reports to monitor the fund balance. Again, that's one that we're a little bit undecided, we're not against, we're just undecided on it at this point. The district did at one time, I would say twenty-five years ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago, we did have a fund balance policy. It was quickly rescinded. Anytime something happens to the revenue, it's very hard to keep that in place. It's very difficult also with the financial condition of the state to set a fund balance policy right now. The district does set goals, however, to improve the fund balance each year, to a point that we would be able to absorb any cuts in a given year and also give us the opportunity to be able to plan for the next year. So, we have set, Dr. Deegan had set a goal each year to where we needed to move to so that we would be prepared when we took those cuts, and we were fortunate enough this year that we were able to absorb all the cuts, and we didn't have to make any snap decisions, and we were better prepared. Number 11, improve the district's purchasing process by revising the purchasing limits, and if you recall, we accepted that just as is, and we did that on May the 23rd. Improve the district's purchasing program by increasing the use of automation within the district and with vendors, including posting the bidding opportunities on the district's website. We've accepted that one so far with modifications. We are going to put it on a trial basis. We do have some, we are posting some of the major bids out there, probably not going to put every little one out there, we're going to put the major ones out there. Ms. Relk in the purchasing department is going to monitor that this year to see what kind of response that we give, to see whether or not we actually want to move toward the automation of them, where they are actually submitting the big back to her. Right now, she's just listing when it's due, where the company gets it, that sort of thing. Okay? We're going to try to monitor that for a year or so to see.
Perhaps if that works, that might be something that you can, we can set a limit on what the amount of the bid would be to be on the website.
Yes, those are some of the questions that we have to. And then the part about bids having to be sealed, we're a little confused about that. How is that, how do you work that? How do you keep it confidential, those sorts of things? I would like to actually see another school district to actually have one in place before.
Why would that be a problem? Why would having sealed bids be a problem? I mean, what would, what's the sum?
Well, in case someone could actually get in there.
An email?
Yeah.
So, how they would probably get in their bid?
It's not a seal.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So, not, we're not sure on that.
Okay, I switch.
They asked us to close our basement inventory. We have rejected that. After reviewing the order on paper alone, the district would spend an additional $140,000 if we let each individual site order their paper by themselves. It's just not cost effective, because they would pay bill for the cost. So, we're paying $120,000 for what we're working now, at approximately $27 a case, and on the market, it's about 52, 52 to 53, so that's, we rejected it.
And how much is in a case?
Twenty-seven.
And each school has their own basement account, is that correct?
Yes. So, we order it, we stock it, they then order it from us. Okay, LPS is commended for its mandatory direct deposit, which is both effective for the district as well as the employees. Yes, all of our full-time employees have direct deposit, the part-time and temporary employees, not quite all of them, but I will tell you, the HR and the payroll department works diligently to keep them up. We get, those are in-and-out type of people sometimes, so it's kind of hard to keep them right on par. Okay, and LPS, number 15, LPS is commended for its purchasing and vendor payment processing procedures, which help to ensure that services and materials are ordered properly and accurately, required before payment is made. I am pleased to say that we're going to accept that one, because that is state law. So, I will tell you that the girls in the business office, Kathy and Nancy, they do an awesome job making sure that the bills are paid correctly. Okay? Number 16, improve the management of the district's fixed assets by creating additional policies, revise requirements for placing low items on the list, and taking a 100% comprehensive annual physical inventory. We've kind of accepted that one with some modifications. We started updating the fixed asset manuals to include different forms that we are now asking them when they want to dispose of an item, or they want it picked up, or those sort of things. So, those are the types of forms that we're going to try to get added into the fixed asset policy and procedures manual. This is probably one of our newest components to the accounting system, so we're just kind of learning what all we need to do, how does it all work, that sort of thing. We also asked, they talked about all the items, the disposed items, that were still in the main, main frame of it. We did, there was no mechanism to delete. I just didn't want to go in there and delete them and not have a record of it. The company, we put that back to the company, and we do have a new feature that they brought on board in March, so we were able to go back and actually delete out the disposed items so that it didn't make it so cumbersome to work with. Now, I will tell you though, I think we're still going to keep it on the same timeframe in which we delete all things out of the system. We keep 10 years on the accounting system. So, when that year, the 11th year is ready to come out, that's when we will take them all, everything. We will do everything the same, we can do them all alike. I also don't recommend that we do the fixed asset inventory. We shifted to the responsibilities of the principal, maybe that's what their recommendation was, that they do it and then send us the information. Just don't think that's going to work. I think what we've got in place, it would work. I will, we will be asking them to at least designate someone at each of the sites to help her when she goes out. We do only have one staff member that is doing that. At the secondary levels, we've already got that pretty much in place. There is a, a person that is designated to help her when she goes out there. If we get that working in the elementary schools, I think it would definitely improve that. I will tell you that closing some of the schools, shifting some of the things, we are kind of in transit right now, so she is, she's working diligently to try to get everything back into proper places. Okay, also, a few years ago, we added a new scanner to it, so it's not just being done by hand, and that, she goes out, it scans the barcode, she comes back, she uploads it into the system. Pretty neat. And I don't think we can afford to buy a scanner at all the locations physically, it's pretty. And last, the LPS is commended for its comprehensive activity fund manual and the annual approval of the activity fund accounts. Again, that is state law, and I will tell you that yes, Kathy does an awesome job updating that every year, so I thank her for that. Any other questions? Comments? I just also publicly want to say that the girls in the business office, Teresa, Tracy, Kathy and Nancy, Sheila and Sandy, it is an ongoing, everyday, day-to-day operation. It doesn't slow down, and they do a great job. Let me close by reading the vision and mission statements that we have on our website. It says, "The school district's resources has an impact on every member of the community. The quality of the educational programs provided for students can be directly linked to the resources available to the district and the effective, efficient management of those resources. The mission of the finance and business offices is to develop and monitor a budget in such a way to maximize all available resources in preparation for the purposes."
Thank you. On to item number seven, your report.
Item number seven. Making a note there. Item A, consideration action regarding proposed revisions to policy DN A, or teacher evaluation. This has to do with the teacher leader effectiveness law, and what this will do is it'll change the frequency which we have to evaluate our highest rated teachers from two to three years, and it'll also update some portions of it to reflect the new changes in state law.
Move for approval? A second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes. Item B, consideration action regarding the proposed revisions to policy DN AA, evaluation of administrative personnel. About two years ago, I'm going to take a little trip back, Ms. Ellis started talking to McCrell. McCrell is the evaluation company, the research, it's the Mid-Continental Research Educational Laboratories. They actually do the evaluation tool that evaluates all our principals in the state. They had no evaluation tool for central office personnel. Ms. Ellis has been working with them, bringing them back, working with us, working with them, and I would, I'm proud to say that this policy will enable us to adopt McCrell, and I believe it would be the first in the nation, is that count correct? Second, well, she started it. The, the, the central office would be evaluated on the same instrument as principals, which creates continuity in the organization, so I think it's an incredible. So I think it's an incredible thing and Ms. Ellis needs to be commended for that. So I do recommend that we adopt this change.
Move for approval.
Second. Call the board, please.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes. Item C, superhand announcements, first thing on your table and I'm going to go ahead and pass this down to Colonel Curtis. Before and after pictures of Eisenhower.
Just do the...
Oh, we've got a picture.
We've got one right here.
Oh, she's got one before me.
Oh, we've got one, yeah.
Just some quick, Ms. Curtis and her team, Tiffany, in the communications, put some before and after pictures together so we can see the difference between Eisenhower High School before and after. The project is wrapping up, we're getting close to it being completely finished. And I showed you a couple pictures last time, but this gives you more of a contrast. It's, it's really looking good and if you walk in the building, it's a tremendous difference inside the classroom.
I think that with these pictures, and I think to show that, Dr. Deegan brought this idea to us when he showed these pictures of Enid. Enid had done this and it was remarkable. And when you see these pictures, if you've not, it's like night and day. It looks like, you know, it brings an older building into a new building. It looks, because brick, brick doesn't age much, you know, so just the colors of it does. But, and so taking that idea of using that funds to not only be aesthetically, and I hope that we get some energy savings that next year with it because they'll cut down on hopefully, you know, the coal air coming in and out and then the heat because they're tinted. But I think that was a very good addition. Looks good. I can't wait. I guess Lawton High is next, right?
We have the architect plans for that and Douglas ready. So that's all the sales tax. Those are ready to go as soon as we, since we do a pay-as-you-go program, we wait till we know that we have the money and then we commission the deed.
Very good.
So that's really an impressive thing. Couple of announcements, Eisenhower Middle School math teachers, Nicole Hall and Donna Cook are helping to produce math textbooks that align the Oklahoma theory math, mathematics academic standards. Hall and Cook, along with eight other teachers, are working in conjunction with Alpha Plus Systems to write the new textbooks. Alpha Plus Systems may turn out to be one critical component for what we do in Lawton Public Schools in the math textbook arena and I applaud our ed services team for working with them. Our high school juniors have the chance this summer to participate in the first ever intern mentorship program with the city of Lawton. So we had high school juniors working with the city of Lawton this year. They had to fill out an application and receive a job and pass a drug test before they begin to work for the city. And so this program was developed by the late Stanley Haywood, the city councilman and longtime counselor of Lawton Public Schools. So I'm glad to see Mr. Haywood's work carrying on.
Can we go back one, the middle picture?
Yeah.
There's such a striking difference that we really didn't think it was the same building.
Yeah.
We've been studying that and that is amazing.
It's amazing.
That is a big, big difference.
And I want to also mention that, one last thing is, I read the paper this week. David Hale is, is semi-retiring from the editorial. He'll still be doing the editorial page, but I want to put a shout out to Mr. Hale at the newspaper. He's going to go, he'll, he'll be doing part-time and I'm, I'm happy for him and his family. And Steve Robinson, who's done a great job, will be taking over him. So KW is here and I just wanted to just shout out to them because I just, just truly appreciate the work of the Constitution. And that concludes my report.
Does anyone need anything removed from the consent agenda?
I'd suggest we remove page 35 for some considerations. That's the two increased purchase orders for the architect.
Page 35, anything else? I undertake a motion to... Remove for approval of the minus page 35.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes. In regard to page 35, I just, I, I do recommend we adopt it and approve this. I just thought a little bit more explanation would be helpful for the board. There are two purchase orders, the bottom one, the, the small one of $2,400 and some change. That has to do with running copies, et cetera. That's, that's not a big deal. The top one, however, $42,090 has to do with the, the additional bid expense for the furniture that went into Freedom. And I thought it would, it'd bear, I had given the board an initial explanation in my notes that this has to do with the possible bid of Sheridan Road, but it doesn't. I just want to make sure everybody understood, this has to do with the Freedom Furniture. It's a little odd for an architect to get a percentage of the furniture sale.
That was my question, why are they?
That's a question I can't answer, but I wanted to make sure we at least understood that's what's going on here.
Okay.
It, again, that's one of those things set up in the original contract, but it is, it's not an exorbitant amount that we can't absorb. I just wanted to make sure the board understood what that was exactly for.
But should we have...
Is that in the, in the contract?
Yes, it's part of the contract. We do, we do have to pay that amount. I just wanted to understand what it was for precisely.
Then why do we have to vote on it if we have to pay?
Because it's an increase in the original purchase order. It's more, more...
I see.
Yeah, I've actually got the...
Do we know why they were so far off with their projection of furniture?
I'm usually, we see something like a couple thousand dollars, but $42,000 of mis... I wish they were here, they can't respond to the questioning.
Can we have that poll until next time and ask them why there was such an increase?
We could. Everything seems to be in line with the contract, however. I am going to have them soon for, for a report and I think it would be appropriate giving a chance to explain a little bit more.
Okay.
So I do recommend we pay it. I've got the contract here, I've got the, the bid specs from everything. I feel comfortable with the amount.
But I mean, I mean, we don't have no choice, though, you're saying. We do have to pay it.
I, I believe we do have to pay it according to the contract, yes.
Because I mean, I don't know why we're voting if we have to pay it.
Okay, anytime it gets an increase in the purchase order.
I never have seen an architect be involved in buying furniture and being reimbursed or in, in the collection fee off, off the furniture. Is this...
A little bizarre, a little bit different. Again, I had, Ms. Prinster actually did the legwork for me this morning. She pulled up the contract. It was something set up. Again, we wanted to make sure that you understood why. And, and we are going to have the architect here soon, so it might be something...
Would you mind reading that to us, please?
I don't have it, it might, it's in my office, but it was actually board approved in May of 2012 when we actually approved the contract for the architect.
Yeah, the survey price, now it's going over $42,000. We didn't approve the $42,000.
No, let me, let me go back and say that normally when we put them on and we put them on for an estimated amount to an architect, then once the bid is let and Harper's bid went out, then we automatically adjust it. Okay? But in the language of the bid, the contract for Royne Williams, it also allowed them to get, there's a line directly on their contract that said, "including the furniture", because the furniture was removed from Harper's bid because we were going to buy it separately. That was not something that we would have normally remembered to do. So when we got ready to start paying and we've gotten near the end, we realized that we had not made that change back in 2012, but the board had already approved the change on the contract. I just didn't want to do it without...
Has Chuck looked at that contract? Has he, has Chuck looked at that or been able to?
The contract was, like I said, it was in 2012.
Okay, and I appreciate you saying it's board approved, but our board approval is through all the recommendations that you bring for us. If there's red flags, I would appreciate to say that this is out of the normal, this is not something normal. We are not attorneys, we are, we do not know any of this.
I agree.
And so when it comes... As well, you're not an attorney. That's why I think it's very important our school attorney reviews it.
That's why I'm saying, I didn't even see that...
And we're going to get through this when it comes to demolition of buildings as well. I mean, whether it's one, whether it's two, I mean, I go through this agenda pretty clear as much as I can. And if I have questions, I bring them up. But you know, for you to say it's all been board approved, I understand that and it is our final stop, that's why we're asking the questions now. And then we get pushed back of, well, you got to trust us. Well, which one is it? Do we trust you or do we not trust you? And go over this with a fine tooth comb. And I don't put you on trial here.
Yeah.
But I know you're responding, responding to these questions. But you can kind of see that, you know, we're responsible for every tax dollar, just as you are. And we have constituents that we have to answer of when this comes across and it gets through the media, why are we paying $42,000 additional for furniture? Is that a going rate?
It's not furniture, it's for a fee.
Let me help, let me help Ms. Prinster. I, Ms. Prinster, I put you on the spot, I apologize. If you, but again, Diane didn't create the architect.
No, we understand that.
Mr. Wade, yeah, of course, I'm sure in 2012 we'll review this, but it's been a long time. So, you know, it, it, but it is part of the contract that we, we agreed to pay. I, I do, you know, it was four years ago. I think it would, I think Freedom's going to be a good learning point for all of us.
I think so too, but is there not any way for us to not approve this part right now until we actually get to see that in the contract and have our attorney review it?
If it's processed, I'll be happy to go forward.
And if you'd like to table it until the next board meeting, we can. And Mr. Wade, you've had the agenda, I didn't hear any concerns, but if you want to, it takes a little more time to review it, we can bring it back up at the next board meeting.
Well, I tried to call you Friday and miss you and we, we missed each other. But I mean, that's why I was calling to inquire about that one particular subject because I have no recollection of seeing that contract. I don't...
In 2012, I wouldn't hear it yourself.
Sure.
So if you want to, if you want to, I can just table it and have Mr. Wade look at it between now and then and he can come back to it.
I mean, I, you know, I wasn't here in 2012 either. I mean, I, if it's not a problem, I would like for us to be able to look at it now and refresh our attorney's recollection, let him review it. I just feel better about it.
Okay, sure. That's perfect. That's why we pulled it, in case we have any concerns.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wade, if you will look at that between now and the next board meeting, that'd be great.
It'd be my pleasure.
Well, that covers both items, right?
Yes, there are two of them. Let's just go ahead and hold both of them over just for clarity.
Thank you for pulling it for us.
Thank you for pulling it, very much.
Again, Ms. Darren Stetter.
And we won, we were filing at you, you were just the lady we were...
And just a reminder, Ms. Prinster just got honored with a statewide, her entire department business service with excellence in Oklahoma Finance School. So again, proud of, I just kind of put you on the spot, I apologize, Ms. Prinster, so.
And you handle it so...
I thought she did.
That's why she's out of the position.
Without her, I would, you know, she pulled the homework for me and...
Well, I mean, we're going to be asked on so many things and this is something we just...
Absolutely. That's why we table things.
Okay.
Okay, that...
Yes, sir.
So that concludes the consent agenda.
Do we need a motion to table that, don't we? Do we need a motion to table?
I believe we just pulled, we pulled.
Oh, it's right, that's right.
All right, no proposals executive session for this evening?
I have none promoted, opposed.
Okay, so now to your personnel report.
Under item 13 on the superintendent's personnel report, I have item A, vote to approve the employing, promoting, disciplining and receiving resignations of individuals certified as support salary personnel listed on pages 59 through 60.
I move to approve.
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.
Consideration of any new business?
I have none.
Next, regular board meeting date scheduled for Thursday, August 18th, 5:00 p.m. here at the Shoemaker?
No.
Any consideration of action concerning any other board meeting dates?
I have none.
Any board announcements?
I do. I would, I would like to send condolences to General Osse's family.
Yes, definitely.
On behalf of myself and the board and Dr. Deegan.
Definitely. That's quite a shock for him and his family.
We will try to get information about the services and we will make sure we send something on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other board announcements? Any motion to adjourn?
I assume...
Second.
Call the board, please.
Mr. Jester?
Go ahead.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Sherram?
Yes.